Right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's public hearing. This is a public hearing for a proposed marina on Lake Makatawa Park Township Auto County. My name is Ryan Blasek. I'm with Environmental Support Division of Eagle, and I'll be helping to moderate the public hearing tonight. But before we get too far into it, I just have some logistical items to go through here. Now, what you should be seeing on your screen is the kind of the agenda for tonight. We're going to do an introduction of the Eagle staff who are on the line. And this is a public hearing is kind of broken up into two parts. The first part is an informational session. So we'll have the applicant is going to have an opportunity to present some information on the project. And then immediately after that, to be a question and answer session to be able to ask questions about the project. That should go to about 6:30. And then the second portion is the official hearing. Now that's the part where we can actually make a statement kind of for the official record. And that will be the second part, and we're going to go through how we're going to do that all here in a little bit. We're asking about other ways to submit an official comments, where to find other information, and then who we can contact for additional questions. Alright, so in case you're not familiar or haven't used the Zoom platform before, just a couple logistical things. So you're aware all lines are muted during the webinar, so you'll be able to hear us, but we can't hear you. You can submit your questions using the question box in Zoom toolbar at the bottom, so you can type a question in there during the presentation or before the question and answer session. And then also, just so you're aware, we are recording this meeting. It's going to be click captioned and put on the Eagle website. And we'll send you a link in a few days to where you can find that. Alright, so at this time, I'd like to invite our Water Resources Division staff with Eagle to go ahead and introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Joshua Crane. I'm in the Grand Rapids District Office, and I am the hearings officer tonight.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jeff Fisher. I'm the current acting district supervisor in the Grand Rapids office for the Resource Program Staff.
Alright, thanks, Josh and Jeff. Alright, so now we're going to go ahead and start the presentation by the applicant. And so what we're going to need to do is locate them in the attendees, and then we will unmute them and give them an opportunity to present, and it looks like they're unmuted right now. Alright, you can go ahead.
Alright, good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Vander Cody. I'm a civil engineer with Fishback. We are the consulting engineer for Covenant Five, and we have prepared the application for the dock permit being discussed this evening. Next slide, please. Thank you. Our project location is on the north side of Lake Makatawa in Park Township. It is Pine Creek Bay, about halfway down the bay from Douglas Avenue on the east side of the bay, which is depicted on the left end of the large gray line and is labeled as project location. Next slide, please. The riparian area for our site consists of 7.6.7 acres, as depicted in blue, and we have 970 feet of lake frontage. This is the usable area that we have to consider for our application in our design process. Next slide, please. This is our proposed dock plan. At the top of the plan, you can see that we are proposing one new head dock from the shore, which measures 81 feet. That head dock goes from the shore out to the boat slips. There are 24 boat slips measuring 96 feet for a total of 177 feet. At the bottom of the image, you'll see that we are proposing an American Disabilities Act compliant kayak launch on the south side of the existing dock. This kayak launch will consist of a floating launch with a transfer station for people with disabilities to get into and out of their kayaks. There is a ramp connecting the transfer station to the existing, the floating transfer station to the fixed dock. And the kayak launch itself will have grab rails in order to facilitate the kayaks entering and exiting the water on the roller platform. Next slide, please. Again, this is the riparian area that we are working with to design our proposed docks. We evaluated many options before deciding upon our final design. Next slide, please. This is our final design. As you can see, we are fitting the proposed docks and kayak launch into the riparian area. We have designed the docks and kayak launch in the least impactful area. Our careful design preserves 85% of the usable area for boating, fishing, kayaking, and mooring. This provides over 600 feet of remaining width across the bay. And this is almost twice as wide as the current width of the bay just to the north of us. In conclusion, we carefully designed and placed the dock in the best location possible for both our community and the public use of the bay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for providing that information on the project. We're going to move into question and answer at this point, then. I should also mention Matt Tomlinson, who is also with Environmental Support Division from Eagle, is also on the line. He's going to be helping kind of in the background with putting things in the, excuse me, in the chat and doing the Q and A in the background. Alright, so I'm going to go through kind of how we're going to do this. Again, you can either submit a question in the Q and A box, the question and answer box at the bottom of your screen, or you can raise your hand using the hand icon at the bottom of your screen, and we're kind of going to go back and forth. And I'll ask the questions of the panelists. Josh, Jeff, and then the applicant. And I should also mention, if you're calling by phone, it looks like we had a few phoning callers. If you want to raise your hands to ask a question, you just need to type pound two, and that should allow you to raise your virtual hand so that we'll be able to call on you. Alright, so at this point, are there any questions? Or does anybody want to raise their hand and verbally ask a question related to this project? Okay. I have one hand up. David Bean. Going to, we're going to unmute you. And you should be able to unmute yourself and go ahead and make your, ask your question.
Yeah, good evening. I was just wondering, how was that 6.7 acres of riparian area identified and what encompasses that?
I'm going to defer that question to the applicant as they were the ones who conducted, had the riparian interest survey conducted, and they might have more detailed information as to the specifics of that riparian interest survey.
Thank you.
Hello, Joshua. This is Jason Vander Cody once again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Yes, thank you for that question, Mr. Bean. The way that the 6.7 acres of riparian area was identified was by our professional surveyors. We went out on the bay and we surveyed both sides of the bay. And then we also looked at case law and historic court action on the bay to determine the center threat of the bay. Once we had determined the center threat of the bay, we then projected our property lines perpendicular to it. And from that point, the professional surveyor was able to generate the area of the riparian interests. Does that sufficiently answer your question?
I'm not sure if I'm still muted or not, or looks like I'm unmuted.
Yeah, I can hear you.
What, what is the definition of the riparian area and how it relates to the docking?
So the riparian interest area is the riparians who own the property along the shoreline also own the bottom lands that project out underneath the water. And so as a riparian, they do own the bottom lands there and have certain rights to do certain activities over those bottom lands.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you for your question. Alright, it looks like we have a question that is typed in the question box. Okay, why is the dock starting 75 feet out from the shore? Why do you need so much space between the shore and the shore side of your dock system if you are no longer going to put any transient boat slips there?
I will once again defer that to the applicant to defend their reasoning behind that.
Thank you, Joshua. If I understand the question correctly, they are wondering why the dock was positioned where it is with the 81 feet of head dock. And the reason for that is because we are also avoiding dredging the bottom of the bay. And so we need to be able to maneuver the boats in and out of their slips without their propellers touching the bottom of the bay. We completed a topographic survey of the area under the water and wanted to make sure that the depths of the slips were suitable for the boats to maneuver in and out of them without impacting the bottom of the bay.
Thank you for the question and the answer. Just as a reminder, yeah, I don't have any other questions right now, but if you want to submit a question, you can type it in the Q and A box or raise your hands using the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen, or again, there's a couple phoning callers, you can hit pound two, and that will raise your virtual hand. So are there, are there any other questions at this point of our applicant or of Eagle staff related to this project? Okay, it looks like we won't come in. If Covenant Five owns the bottom of the bay, does that mean that the area of the bay is not part of the public trust?
The whole bay, the water is held within the public trust.
Okay. Thanks, Josh. Other questions? Everyone, another question just popped in. Everyone else along the lake has to dredge to have proper depth. Why do you need to be so far into the bay? This is related to the, one of the earlier questions that you had related to the dock spacing.
I'll let Covenant Five discuss that as well.
I'm not sure I fully understand the question, Joshua. If, if it's my impression that the statement is that everybody else around the bay has to dredge, and I'm not aware of that. The reason for our dock positioning is that they're going to be permanent docks. They're not going to be moved in and out in the spring and the fall. And therefore, we're positioning them for both the current condition and future condition, and we're making sure that we do not need to dredge for moving boats in and out of those slips.
Okay, thanks for the answer and for the question. I have, yeah, a few more had popped in, so the water level is high now. How do you account for the problem of propellers touching the bottom when the lake level goes down?
So the water level fluctuates throughout the year and throughout decades, and we're designing the docks where we have them positioned for avoiding the propellers touching under most circumstances. That's why we've positioned the docks where we've positioned them, and that's why the application was prepared the way that it was.
Okay, thank you. How do you account for the boat, for boat traffic and the safety of others using the water to kayak and swim? So how do you account for the boat traffic and the safety of others using the water to kayak and swim?
Great question. Certainly something that we took seriously in the application and the design process. So the way that we've considered that and made it a top priority is by preserving 85% of the usable area of our riparian area for continued public use. So we have minimized our impact of the application to the greatest extent possible, and that retains 85% of the public use of the bay in our area.
Okay. Thank you. The project has changed and has been evolving since park township approval. Is this the final? Or would there be other modifications to this permit? Are there any other permit modifications pending?
So currently, after the public comment period ends, there can still be modifications to the project that would be, that could be authorized without additional public notice or public comment if the, if it's decreased in impact area. So there might be some slight changes. Adding slips would make us have to re-public notice it if that was a proposed change. But I would defer to Covenant Five if they have any additional plans for changing that.
Thank you, Joshua. If I understand the question correctly, they're wondering if we are intending to change the plans after submission. The answer to that question reflects yours. Not at this time. Our application has been submitted and is being public noticed in the event that modifications need to be made in order to accommodate Eagle or others after the fact such changes would be less than what was public noticed and not more than that where it would need to be re-public noticed. So at this time, our application has been submitted, and we do not intend to make changes that would require re-public notice.
Okay, thank you. And there's another question that's somewhat related, it seems. Does the boat size in the proposal match the agreement between the Covenant Five and Park Township? It says the agreement was for eight boats at 24 feet long, eight boats at 26 feet, and eight boats at 28.
I will defer that question to Covenant Five to answer. Since we look at maximum slip length.
So if I understand the question correctly, it's relating to land zoning and land use with our PUD approval for Park Township, not relating to the Eagle application being considered this evening. However, the answer to the question, if I understand it correctly, is that the the marina design, the slip design is compliant, and the docks will provide housing for the boats as we agreed upon with the township.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I have, I'm not related, actually I have a statement in here, so I guess I just want to remind folks that you have a chance to make a statement during the public hearing portion, the official public hearing portion tonight. So you'll have your chance to make a statement. I don't have any other that are actual questions that we could do a question and answer at this point. Are there, is there anybody else who would like to ask a question? In this question and answer session?
Ryan, I would like to state that the, the application has been forwarded to the township, and they have had opportunity to review it. They were also included on the public notice and the public hearing notes.
Okay, yeah, thanks for making that clarification, Josh. Okay. There other questions? And I see somebody is trying to, can't hear anything. Matt, maybe you want to see if they recommend that they call in and see if they are able to listen through the call-in process? Then just a notification that we had come in. Any other questions at this point? For this question and answer session? Okay, we had one that came in. How did, how did you come up with your linear foot measurements for your calculations?
I'll defer that to the applicant as they were the ones who designed the project and provided that information.
Thank you, Joshua. I'm not sure I understand the question correctly. I believe he's referring to the lengths that I mentioned in my earlier presentation. And I'm not sure if he's wondering how the lengths refer to the drawing, or if he's wondering how the lengths were designed. Can I get clarification on that?
I haven't received anything yet. So if, if you need additional clarification, somebody, the person who typed that last question in would like to provide some clarification, you're welcome to.
Or Ryan, it's possible he is referring to the linear feet of frontage on the bay, so I'm not sure which number he's referring to on that one.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Alright, so just give it another minute here. Okay, so here, linear feet of head dock. I believe you called it as what was typed in.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. The linear feet of head dock is the distance that we measured between the existing seawall where the head dock begins, and then the boat slip area where the head dock transitions to serve the boat slips. So there's 81 feet between the existing seawall and the boat slip area, and that's how we measured that number.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Okay, we still have a few minutes if anybody wants to ask any more questions. And then, so just as a reminder, the rest of the plan on the agenda for the, for tonight is to go through other ways to make a public comment, and then we're going to go through the public comment process, where again, you'll have a chance to make a comment for the record. And then we'll also go for where you can find additional information. What is the depth of water at the end of the head dock?
I believe, I don't have that information right in front of me at this moment. I would defer that to Covenant Five if they have that in front of them.
It's going to depend on the day and the water level as that fluctuates. I am looking through our permit right now to see if I can give you the answer at the time of application, so bear with me a minute here. Let me, let me look this up and I'll get right back to you. One second, please.
Yep, yep, no problem. And then it looks like this is, also, you did not say what numbers you used to come up, to come to your number of .91 if dock per linear foot frontage for the reserve. We can address that one. I guess after you look this, I'll look that last question up a little further. Again, we're going to go to, you know, about 6:30 at the latest with this question and answer session. You're more than welcome to type some more questions in. And then at that point, we'll, we'll move forward with the public hearing portion.
Jason, I just got the plans pulled up, and it looks like the, the depth elevation is approximately 576 or just below that for the bottom elevation.
Okay, but you said the end of the head dock in the question, so I was assuming that it was the four foot at 579. So I'm, yeah, it'll range between either four foot or whatever Joshua measured. I was looking at the four foot end of the head dock.
Okay. And so the, so the other part, or this is, I guess, related to the earlier question. Also, you did not say what numbers you used to come to your number of .91 linear feet and else is LF, I'm assuming, linear feet dock per linear foot frontage for the reserve.
I'll refer that to the applicant as well. So it's their calculations.
Joshua, this is Jason. I have the application sketches in front of me. I don't have that section of the narrative in front of me, so I'm not sure about the question. I guess I don't have the answer without that in front of me to review.
Okay. Yes, I guess we would need some clarification on that last question. And then, and then another question, how much depth does a 24, 26, and 28-foot boat need for not hitting the bottom with their prop?
I'll defer that to the applicant as they knew that for their calculations of necessary water depth.
Very good.
Sure, thank you, Joshua. If I understand the question correctly, the answer was what is the depth needed for the draft of the boat so that the propeller doesn't touch the bottom? And the answer to that is it varies greatly because there is a wide variety of boat motors, a wide variety of bolt hulls, and a wide variety of combinations thereof. Also, as the water level fluctuates over time and across years, we're trying to make sure that the bottom of the bay on the slips closest to the shoreline still provides and facilitates navigation for our boats to enter and exit the marina because it's going to be a fixed marina and not a floating marina. So because of that, we're designing for all conditions of all boats and motors and making sure that we're not needing to dredge the bay and that the boats can safely enter and exit without prop touch on the bottom.
Okay, thank you for the question and the answer. Are there any other questions? We have a minute or two here left. Is there any last minute questions before we move on to the public hearing portion of this public hearing tonight? Just give it another minute. I'm not seeing any, any questions pop up. Okay. Alright, well, thank you to everyone that typed in a question and and for the applicant and our staff, Eagle staff for answering the questions. Alright, I've got one more. This will be the last one. Still a little unclear. What is the depth of water at the boat slips?
Again, the, the depth of the water at the boat slips is going to vary across time and across boat slips. So what we've proposed in the application is for the closest slips to the shoreline to handle the, the largest boats that the the largest boats that we're anticipating. And that's based on the current water condition as well as the future water conditions. As Josh mentioned, I think in the current water condition, it's approximately six feet.
Okay, thanks. And actually, there was another one that popped up, so we'll ask answer this one quick. Before we move on, we still have a little bit of time. You claim the Baywoodlands has ten eighty linear foot of frontage with approximately twelve thirty-eight linear foot of head dock. It says which is wrong for one point one four. And it's asking what your numbers are. So I don't know if that's how you calculated the numbers or. And I can read this again if needed.
I I believe this was part of likely part of their alternatives analysis for how they have minimized impacts. But that one I would defer to the applicant as well for how they calculated everything.
Sure, happy to answer that. We calculated it using publicly available information, including historic plat documents for lot lines, Ottawa County GIS for existing lot lines, aerial imagery from Google, beginning in nineteen ninety-seven and subsequent years in order to determine the docks and the frontage and the different opportunities that people on the other side of the lake have taken to enjoy their riparian rights.
Okay, thank you for answering a question. Yeah, again, thank you for everyone who asked a question and for taking the time to answer the questions. So what we'll do now is we'll move on to the next item up for tonight. All right. So before we go into the public hearing portion, we just want to talk about some other ways to submit an official comment. The first way is by our My Waters system. You can provide those comments directly into My Waters by accessing the public hearing event. Or you can do it by email to Josh Crane or by mail to the State Office Building, fifth floor, Grand Rapids. For those on the phone, Josh's email is C R A N E J three at Michigan dot gov. And the public comment period after this public hearing will be open for ten days, which is until May fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. So if you don't feel comfortable for whatever reason, or do you think of something later on to make a comment, you can do that on one of these other ways. But as far as for making a public official public comment tonight, I'd like to invite Josh Crane to to start this process and read the hearing statement.
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joshua Crane, and I am the district representative in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. I will be serving as the hearings officer for this public hearing on Eagle submission number H P three T H five nine G Q A H F. With me tonight is Jeff Fisher, the acting district supervisor, and Ryan Blazek as the moderator. To describe how this is going to work tonight, I will begin with some background information about why we are here. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. Will then be time to for you to provide your comments. And we will spend the rest of the time tonight listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I will provide a short summary and closing. By way of background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs to help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream, or wetland, constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection or constructing docks, and building in a designated critical sand dune area, wetland, or floodplain. The law governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety-four Public Act four fifty-one as amended. I'll refer to that as Act four fifty-one. We are here tonight because Covenant Five LLC has proposed the following. They have proposed to construct a new twenty-four slip marina at one eight six South Division Street in Holland, Michigan. The applicant proposes to place a total of twenty-four twelve-foot by twelve-foot boat lifts. They propose to place a total of approximately four hundred forty-seven linear feet of six-foot wide dock and three hundred sixty linear feet of four-foot wide dock. They also propose to construct a thirty-foot long by six-foot wide kayak launch with a twenty-foot long by thirteen-foot wide transfer platform and a nine-foot wide by twenty-foot five twenty-five-foot long ramp. Lastly, the applicant proposes to install a stormwater outlet structure to Lake Makatowa and place approximately seven cubic yards of riprap at the outlet to dissipate the energy. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain criteria set forth in part three oh one inland lakes and streams of Act four fifty-one. In general, we must consider the effects of the proposed project on Lake Makatowa. When reviewing an application for for a permit under the provisions of part three oh one of Act four fifty-one, Eagle is charged to make the following considerations as required by section three oh one oh six and section three oh one oh six A of part three oh one. Under section three oh one oh six, the department shall issue a permit if it finds that the structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust or riparian rights. The department shall consider the possible effects of the proposed action upon the inland lake and the uses of all such waters, including the uses for recreation, fish and wildlife, aesthetics, local government, agriculture, commerce, and industry. The department shall not grant a permit if the proposed project or structure will unlawfully impair or destroy any of the waters or other natural resources of the state. Under section three oh one oh six A, which pertains to marinas specifically, the department shall issue a permit to construct a marina if the department determines that the marina meets the conditions of section three oh one oh six in all of the following conditions. The marina must extend from the riparian property of the applicant. The marina does not unreasonably interfere with navigation. The marina is located and designed to be operated consistently with the correlative rights of other riparians, including the rights of adjacent riparians. The marina shall be configured so that all boat mooring under any wind condition will occur solely within the marina's riparian interest area. Additionally, boat mooring in ingress and egress for an outside slip shall require a minimum maneuvering distance of one and a half times the length of the slip to the boundary of the marina's riparian interest area. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the Covenant Five LLC project an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition for the project. We will make note of your position, but please understand that by law Eagle is not allowed to base our decision on whether or not there is widespread support or opposition for a project. In just a moment, I will outline the procedures we will use for taking your comments. But before I do so, I need to mention that the notice of this hearing was published in the Holland Sentinel on April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one and on the Eagle calendar since April ninth, twenty twenty-one. As we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, you have had. If you have a comment to provide, please click on the question box in your go-to webinar toolbox, then enter the word comment and enter your name. To ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will allow the these steps. First, the applicant and their consultant has already had an opportunity to describe the proposed project. Second, we will then call on those who have indicated in the comment box that they would like to speak in the general order perceived. As a reminder, if you are participating in this hearing via telephone only, we will also be able to provide your comments during this hearing comment period, or you may submit your comments to Eagle via My Waters email or US Mail. If you have written comments or material that you would like to present, you can upload them into My Waters, or you may email them to me directly. When all the comments have been completed, we will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted. As you begin your comments, please state your name and or any group association you may represent. Each person will be given approximately four minutes to make their comments. Ryan Blazek will indicate to you when you have approximately one minute left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end with the allotted time. If need be, we will indicate when your time has ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Only one person will be allowed to speak at a time. And that Eagle staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed project and listen to those comments. This hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed project. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for ten days from the date of this hearing and will end on May fourteen, twenty twenty-one. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the ten-day public comment period will also be considered an Eagles' decision. Additional information and comments may be submitted through the My Waters public hearing notice through email at cranejthree@michigan.gov, or you can submit the comments through the mail to the Grand Rapids District Office. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision to either issue a permit for the project as proposed or with modifications, or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagles' My Water webpage. Or you can also email me at cranejthree requesting to receive a copy of the permit decision. Thank you for your attention. I'll now ask that that we can start receiving the comments.
Thank you, Josh, for making that statement. So the way this will work, we have five people who have previously indicated in the registration that they wanted to make a comment. So we will identify those five people in the order that they registered and indicated that they wanted to make a comment. I'll identify the person and then also let you know who's on deck so you can kind of prepare to make your comment. And then as soon as we get through all five people, we'll leave it open to anybody who wants to raise their hand through Zoom and make a comment. And then, as Josh mentioned, we'll have four minutes per person. Make sure we have enough time for everyone. I'll let you know when there is a one minute remaining. And and then we'll go from there. So what we'll do is we'll call your name off. We'll have to unmute you, and then you're welcome to start your comment. So the first person. And then Matt is going to help me unmute you. Peter Engels is the first person on my list to make a comment.
Thank you. This is Peter with Covenant Developments, and I actually had put my name on there because I thought that meant you we were going to be presenting, which Jason already did. So essentially, you already have all of our comments from Covenant Developments. So I apologize for the confusion on that.
Hey, no problem. So the next person is, if you, Leslie Brown, and on deck is Barbara Francis. So Leslie Brown. We will unmute you. All right, it looks like you can unmute yourself. All right, you can go ahead. I think you just muted yourself.
I did. Good evening. I did already submit my comments, but I do have concerns about this marina. The number of boats in this area is concerning this boat. This area has been used by the public for many, many years for swimming, for rafting off of boats, for kayaking, for stand-up paddle boards. It's commonly used, and I think that the twenty-four boats posed is a degree of hazard, especially the comment was made by Covenant that they used a measurement of six hundred and twelve feet. I'm not going to say this very well, but ability to pass from the edge of their dock to the, I suppose, the other side of the lake. They have six hundred and twelve feet, six hundred and twelve feet across, and they said almost double what is further down the lake, further north down the lake of three hundred and sixty-two feet, about three hundred and sixty-two feet. Almost no one goes down there because usually it's too shallow for boats. Very, very narrow passage. So I don't think it's a really helpful comparison to say that the boats, the docks that will be extending out into the lake so far are allowing a great deal of passageway. And in fact, a part of the lake that people on Lake Makatowa know know as the Narrows where boat speed is restricted. This area that is going to be open now will be more narrow than the Narrows. So I have concerns about the number of boats, the use of the area, and the amount of passageway for navigational traffic.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much. So next person is Barbara Francis, and then after that, it's Ted Vogel. So Barbara, we're going to find you and unmute. It looks like you can unmute yourself.
There we go. All right. I am president of Baywoodlands, which is a subdivision directly across the bay from the reserve. And we're very concerned about the marina going in, and they have compared their numbers to three subdivisions around the area, Baywoodlands being one of them. And we do have ten private docks. One of them is a shared dock, and their numbers that they're using with this linear footage and all this stuff is is really not a true. We're not comparing apples to apples. Our subdivision has forty-two homes. Ten of those have private docks. Two of those, one of those private homes has a seasonable seasonal portable docks that we can wheel out. Our Deeded Lake access that we the rest of the homes, the rest of the thirty-two homes have to share, can only accommodate six boats. And that is also a portable seasonal seasonal dock that is removed every at the end of every season. That dock is only probably fifty feet long at the most. His total amount of footage that he's coming up with, I want to say, was twelve hundred and some odd feet. At most, we probably have a grand total of eight hundred square feet, which comes to point seven four linear feet. You know, all of his measurements are wrong that he's coming up with. As for Count's Cove, their head docks, half of those, all of those properties, the head docks are actually boardwalks that they have to use to get over their lawns to the actual twenty-five feet of dock going out into the water for their boats. So grand total of their footage that they have for dock is a hundred and seventy-five feet. So there's nothing to compare the amount of dock space that they're going to be taking up to what anybody else on the bay takes up in space. And like Leslie before me said, the area where they're putting this marina is right where everybody uses boats. They ski, they sail, they kayak. There's traffic in there every day, especially on the weekends with skiers, tuber, people pulling tubes, kids boating. It's all I can see is somebody not paying is somebody not paying attention and driving right into one of those docks because he's jutting out so far into the bay to start with. It's
One minute, Barbara.
All right, it's starting out 70 feet away from shore to begin with. All of these docks start at the shoreline. They don't start 75 feet out. I also think there's way too many boat slips. They should start at 16. There's just way too many boats out there to begin with, coming and going with the amount of traffic that will be in there, and we're looking for accidents happening. There's just, there's going to be a lot of accidents happening. It's not going to be good. And I just think it's too much for that little space in there. It's too narrow of an area for too big of a marina. That's it.
All right. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much.
All right. So the next, next person I have is Ted Vogel, and then after that, David Bean.
Thank you, Joshua. I have, I'm a owner, former owner on Pine Creek Bay across from the proposed development. I previously filed a letter in January that you haven't filed. There was a time when it was popular for developers to take, buy a big chunk of farmland that had a small lake frontage, and then dig a canal or series of canals through that land so as to create lots and lots of home sites that they could sell all with lakefront access. I think that has fallen out of favor for a lot of good reasons. But what we have here is something very similar. We have the purchase of a 38-acre farm that runs a quarter mile away from the lake. Has a small amount of lake frontage on, on a very, very narrow section of Pine Creek Bay. And instead of digging a canal through that frontage, instead, we have the creation of as many soluble housing units as possible with the goal of trying to give every one of those lakefront access. It's understandable, but that doesn't recreate any any rights of the developer to have more of a chunk or more of an access to the lake or impede on more of the public use of that lake than anyone else. When you look at this proposal, that's what it clearly does. Developer took it to Park Township because he needed a special approval to exempt from the zoning limitations that existed. The planning commission members who are familiar with the lake said, we think that's just too narrow and too shallow and too small a place to put a marina like that. But he, his attorney informed the planning commission that that would be something that Eagle would decide. Same thing at the Park Township Board, where Park Township Board members who are familiar with the lake said much the same thing, but once again, we're, we're reminded that that wasn't their jurisdiction to determine. It was up to Eagle. Well, now we are in front of Eagle, and we see the result of this. He has filed for the exact absolute maximum that Park Township, he agreed with Park Township to limit his marina to 24 boats. In order to get his approval for his exemption from the zoning laws. He's asked for that absolute maximum. That's a maximum limit. It's not a guarantee. It's nothing that Park Township thought was necessarily a good idea. And we've seen why, because now he wants to go out into deeper water to avoid the shallow areas or that he was warned about. He hasn't proposed the alternatives that easily could remedy the situation. Build shorter docks near the shore or build fewer slips. 24 is far more than this area would have anywhere else around Pine Creek Bay. 24 is far more than it would have if it had been developed as single-family homes as it was zoned. Something more like eight to 10 to maybe 12 or 15 boats. If everybody had two boats apiece, would be what you'd see. The docks would not extend more than about 100 feet. If you, if you measure the docks around the northern part of Pine Creek Bay, they tend, they average less than 100 feet. It's disingenuous in his alternative analysis to talk about linear feet of dock when the real impact on the public use of the lake is extending over halfway to the center of the lake by his own measurements.
Give me about one minute.
We can send you some detailed analysis that shows the errors that have been put forward to Eagle on some of those comparisons. The bottom line is, there's no way of hiding the fact that this is just too big and too too impactful on the public use of the lake. If this were being proposed for the, the Narrows is double, the double the width of what we have here. If something like this were proposed for the Narrows, there is no way it would be considered. And so the similar impact on the use of this lake, which is a very popular area of the lake for people to anchor in and swim and fish and, and waterski is what it, it is the impact on the public trust that you need to protect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Right, so next up is David Bean. And David is the last of our pre-registered comments. So if anybody would like to make a comment after Mr. Bean, then
Good evening, everybody.
Go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Again, I spoke in the previous portion. We own a, a home in the Bay Woodlands subdivision. We are not a waterfront access home, but we use the Bay Woodlands Deeded Access primarily to launch our kayaks and canoes and take advantage of Pine Creek Bay. The reason and we bought the house, or one of the reasons four and a half years ago was to take advantage of the nice quiet access to Pine Creek Bay. And my opinion is that adding 24 large boats to that area is going to dramatically change the environment to Pine Creek Bay and not allow people to casually use that area, as commented before, for kayaking can, or swimming off boats in that area. My understanding of the agreement between Covenant Five and Park Township was that the marina was going to be limited to eight 24-foot-long boats, eight 26-foot boats, and eight 28-foot boats. And my reading of the proposal from Covenant Five is they're looking to put all 24 boats at 30 foot in length. And again, that's going to be too much of a, an issue. The, the lake is busy enough. Myself and my family members have been nearly hit by, on our kayaks, which are all brightly colored by other boats using the area already and adding the congestion of 24 more large boats to that area like Barb stated earlier, going to make for the, the risk of additional accidents or issues between boaters and more casual users of the, the bay. The other concern I have is the distance of the docks from the, the shoreline over at the reserve on Lake Makatawa. I, my feeling is that it should not extend any further out from shore than the existing dock already is, which is approximately 100 feet from shore. They should limit their docking space to that distance and not extend further into the lake and impede traffic along there as well. And finally, I want to make a comment about, again, about safety in the, in front of the Reserve or Lake Makatawa. At the north end of the bay, there were
One minute, David, just so you know.
Okay, thank you. There were a number of trees that were cut down in the water last year, and I was kayaking over there at one point in time. And my kayak became impaled on one of those stumps that were just below the water level. They need, Covenant Five needs to resolve that issue and remove those stumps or cut them down to lake level, lake bottom level. Because anybody waterskiing through there or jet skiing on and hits any of those tree stumps are going to cause serious boat damage or injury to the, the people on those boats. So I think there needs to be a lot of review about the safety of this marina and the other waterfront access to the reserve on Lake Makatawa. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So that is, that is the list that I have in front of me right now of people who wanted to make an official comment for the record, for this file, for this application. Does anybody else, would anybody else like to speak? So you can just raise your hand. And when we call on you, you know, kind of same as, as before, we have roughly four minutes to make a statement. So I've got Jeff Meyer, who is raising his hand, so Jeff, you should be unmuted.
Thank you very much. Yes, I'm Jeff Meyer, and I live on the west side of Pine Creek Bay. And I, I don't have a lot that's different to speak into this, but I do really much, very much appreciate the opportunity to at least express my personal concerns. My wife and I are kayakers, and we enjoy kayaking in Pine Creek Bay and crossing over to follow the shoreline out into Lake Makatawa. If there's, you know, one concern that we already have with our kayaking, it is the crossing of the bay in that there already are power boaters using that fairly confined piece of water. And so, yeah, my concerns very much are around the narrowing of that that, that water and recognizing that this is going to funnel all of the boat traffic into a far narrower and confined space and add these 24 additional vessels to, to that area of the water. So for myself, there is very much the safety concern. And just acknowledging as well the decades-long residential character of Pine Creek Bay with individual private homes along the shoreline. Adding a development with a marina is certainly a significant change to the general character that's been part of the bay for many, many decades of homeownership here. So those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, the next person is Ron Webb. Looks like you can unmute yourself, Ron, and make your comment.
Hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, I, I just want to say I do understand safety concerns that's being put out there. I do use Pine Creek Bay to take my grandkids in there for fishing. So I'm real familiar with that, that area in there. But I will say that when I look at the alternative, if we had eight to 10 private home sites there, each having a dock, having a couple of boats and water crafts, you know, you're going to have probably more than 24 water vessels in that area with separate docks, you know, intruding into that Pine Creek Bay area. And so I, I support what they're doing as far as locating that marina with the 24 boats. I am happy that we're not going to have more boats than that in that area with individual housing. You know, so I, I understand the safety concerns, but I also know there's a lot of no-wake area in that, that area as well. And I like how they did not use the whole frontage for their marina that they're putting it in the little natural cove area. So I just, you know, I, I support what they're doing. I think that it could have been a lot differently if we had individual houses there with individual docks intruding into that waterway. So I just want to give my support for what they've designed for that area and what they're trying to get approved. Thank you.
Right. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? If you're, again, if you're on the phone, you can hit pound two, and that should allows you to raise your hands, and then we can unmute you to make a comment if you'd like. Otherwise, is there anybody else who has, is logged in who would like to make a comment tonight? And I should mention this to the, in a little bit, after we close out of this section of the hearing, we will identify and show you again different ways to make a comment. If you think of something after the fact or you know, had, had thought about it more and would like to make a comment, we'll show those options and alternatives as well. Are there other, give one more minute. Any other comments? Okay. Right, I'm not seeing any anyone else. All right, so at this point, I'd like to invite Josh Crane to make the closing statement for tonight.
All right. Thank you for your comments and cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project and that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional written comments until May 14th, 2021. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. Just a reminder to those that may still want to submit a comment, comments can be submitted via My Waters email or US Mail. Again, if you are interested in finding out the permit decision, you can either check through My Waters or email me at cranej3@michigan.gov, and I would be happy to provide you with the permit decision. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again.
Thank you for that, Josh. And then I have another slide for Josh. If you have further questions along with his contact information. I think the only thing that I want to add is that we'll, we'll be providing you know, the Q and A, Q and A information that you typed in to Josh and Jeff as well. And I think at this point, I'd like to invite Jeff any closing statement tonight for the hearing.
Thanks, Ryan. I'd just like to reiterate what Josh said and thank everybody on behalf of the department for participating in the hearing tonight and providing comments if it chose to do so. We appreciate taking advantage of this opportunity to learn about the project and give us your input. And with that, I'd just like to wish everyone an enjoyable rest of your evening. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Just in follow-up, I know we'll be sending the, the link to the recording for this video, so if there's anything you want to re-watch, you'll be, have that opportunity to do so. Other than that, yeah, again, thanks to everyone for calling in, being part of this process, and I hope everybody has a great evening.